33 minutes past the hour. What we try to do on Early in the Morning is to remember to remember. For example, if we're talking about an issue, whether it's the petition in Atlantic City that you hear nothing about, and I don't want to steal any of Georgia's thunder, I've been meaning to spill the beans on something that I learned about a week ago. Some very, very minimus thing that I thought we were going back to the days of a former unscrupulous clerk in Atlantic City. I hope that Georgia's report is more positive than things used to be a number of years ago. But I never even got a chance to tell you about something I learned. Anyhow, joining us now with an update about the petition in Atlantic City that has been very, very positively received. And this is a petition that would reduce the size of the legislative branch in Atlantic City from nine members, which presently constitutes three at-large council members, George Tippett being one of them, and then you have six wards in Atlantic City. If this petition is successful, you would have three at-large council people. It would stay three, but you would reduce city council by two wards. Therefore, instead of having six wards, you would have four wards and you would just cut the city up differently than it is now. Obviously, the wards would be bigger. Four wards of representation versus six wards. Councilman George Tippett joins us now. How are you, Councilman?
Good morning, Harry. I wish I had some positive news for you because your open story there reminded me of the old days of what's going on now.
So what you're going to tell me is, am I correct, when I say that the news I learned, it wasn't from you, George, over a week ago, was that the clerk was going to reject the petition? Did the petition get rejected?
We just got a letter that there's some inefficiencies on the petition. Let me explain, Harry. The first thing, the clerk's office with counsel solicitor had trouble even coming up with a number of signatures needed. We got past that, got the correct number, 1,180-something signatures that was needed because it's 15% of the actual people that voted in the last general election for a question. Then we come up with a problem with the clerk's office under Rhonda and according to them, this counsel solicitor again, Rob Tarver. Not a very, either he's incredibly stupid or he's purposely running interference on this petition. I like to believe he's running interference and he's not as stupid as he appears. But then they come up with three different dates for when the signatures are due. Nobody could figure. So naturally, we took the earliest date possible and we got the signature sample. We got almost 1,900 signatures. We needed 1,200. We figured they play games and try and throw out every signature that didn't dot an i across the page. So we cover that. At the very end, when all the signatures are in, they come back at us and say, "The petition that they approved, the petition that they researched and gave us as being correct, well, a statute number isn't correct." So we tell them, "Wait a minute. The question is perfectly clear. And if you write a statute number incorrect or something, it's not the end of the world. The intent of the voter and the question is very clear."
Right, right. It's called minimus and it does not defeat the effort that you're doing. So keep going and then I have something I want to share with you.
Okay. So we get past that. So they come up with, "Rob Tarver is going to investigate this and research it and get them an answer." It's funny, I called the Atlantic County Clerk's Office and the young man out there, the clerk out there, he has the answers within minutes. All he did was open the book and read. He understood reading. He understood what he was reading in the Faulkner Act and what the rules and regulations said. They wait to the very last day, the 10th day, to send us a certified letter, a regular letter, saying that it's insufficient. They're going to put it on counsel to vote it down because of inefficiencies. So we'll be filing court today for an emergency injunction to stop them from doing this.
There you go.
We have to go to court. We were prepared to go to court all along. This is worse. I'm serious, Harry. We both lived past administration where things were crazy. I'm telling you, I've never seen administration, and we've been judicial crazy ones, that lies to the people's faces. And one thing Debbie Levins has always taught me was, call this son of a you-know-what out because he says whatever he wants and gets away with it because nobody confronts him. Nobody calls him out on the lies, meaning the mayor and Marty Smalls. They lie to the people's faces. People said, "Hey, just say you're sorry for lying to us." I'm not going to apologize to nobody. That's the attitudes they had. So we'll be in court today because they're playing these games. It'll cost the city money, but we're not going to have our civil rights violated.
Who, by the way, George, which judge is going to hear the case today?
I don't know. We just had the attorneys are drawing up the paperwork and everything.
A lot of times, the assignment judge hears the politically charged cases. So I want to make sure that I'm clear about this. Your visit today is in order to show cause because you can be damaged by them being able to frustrate the will of the people in making it that you can't get this question on the ballot in time for November 8th. So your order to show cause will be to order the question onto the ballot, correct?
I believe that would be it. I'm not a lawyer.
Well, I'm not a lawyer either, but I'm telling you, that's what you got to do. Don't just try to win that it doesn't have to go to city council and then you got to go somewhere else. Your appearance and the reason you want an order to show cause is to get the question on the ballot. I know that it is perfectly clear and the people that signed it knew exactly what they were signing. They knew they were reducing, you know, and keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, when you agree to sign a petition, you're just agreeing to put it on the ballot to let the people decide. In most cases, it's people who also agree and will be voting to reduce city council from nine to seven, but you're just agreeing to allow it to go onto the ballot. George, make sure who's ever handling this knows that order to show cause, because time is really not your friend right now. That judge has to say, "The petition is clear. Its intent is clear. The intent of the voter is clear. I hereby order the question onto the ballot." And then you don't need any of those ass clowns that get to say, "There's some title statute number wrong and this is wrong." And I think the fact that they approved it only to reject it for some minimus reason really shows their contempt for the people. So you don't need city council to vote it up or vote it down. City council could have voted this question and saved everybody a lot of time in shoe leather. You did it with the people. So these people that are running interference have to be called out, like we're calling them out now. This reminds me just like the battles that I used to wage more than a decade, two decades ago. It does not look professional to me. It looks corrupt to me. You know, when a city clerk sees something, and I always thought good things about Rhonda. I didn't think she was capable of this kind of behavior. So Rhonda, if you're listening, shame on you. Shame on you. You go review the petition. Yep, it's good. Go get it out there and then you turn it in. Oh, no, it's not good now. I mean, that is as dirty as it gets. I can't imagine unless the judge would be corrupt that any judge would not order that question on the ballot, George.
Well, Harry, one thing, Rhonda does not have to listen to these attorneys. So she has the choice right now. Do the right thing and retire at the end of the month in style or walk out with a black mark over your head, black cloud over your head for not doing the right thing. What will your legacy be, Rhonda? You decide.
Right. She means she has civil service protection. She's retiring in taze. Do the right thing. So George, I want to make it clear. The very petition that got rejected by Rhonda, she approved, correct?
Yes, we have the stamps on it from the clerk's office, everything.
Well, I'll tell you what, she could be charged. You want to scare somebody, and I'm not trying to do that, she could be charged, I believe, with some kind of misconduct because that's dirty. If you put your experience and your stamp on a petition and then you allow people to go out and get those signatures and bring them back with the crazy timeframes that you have to get all this done by and all the other skullduggery that was being done in and around this matter, and then you go and reject because you say, "Oh, one number's wrong. It's not Title 50. It's Title 51," or whatever the case might be. George, that is dirty. That is just ugly.
Yeah, and Harry, let's face it, there's a lot of pressure on this clerk's office with her retiring.
Why?
Other people filling in.
Why?
Because it's between the administration and city council.
You know what must be really a lot of pressure, George, to know in 10 days you leave and you have a pension for life and there's people that can't even get a job? I want to know what pressure you're talking about.
Harry, you're right. I'm wrong on that. You're right. She needs to do the right thing and go out in style and not with a black cloud over her head.
Just unbelievable times. Well, here's the good news. As long as you have your day in court and whoever is the attorney representing you, and I think you need another attorney, it can't be, I think your guy is conflicted, so it should be the attorney for the petitioners. As long as they're organized and they're going to court to have the judge order the question on the ballot, because here's the city clerk's stamp. This is what was approved. She did not say this was wrong. In fact, she said it was right and that it conformed to all requirements. And we went and got our signatures and then they knocked us out because of one number when the intent... Look, we know how votes count because the intent of the voter is clear and the vote counts. The intent of your thousands of, you know, signatures, your signers and the citizens, voters that have signed this petition, they knew exactly what they were signing. They knew they were signing a petition that would reduce the number of city council members from nine to seven. And here's how it would be done, with three at-large and four wards. And it's very clear, very clear. I can't see how you could lose this unless a politically corrupt decision is made. And I don't see any of our judges doing that. So I think you win this unless you go there and aren't asking for the right remedy.
No, no, we're going to ask for right remedy. We've got attorneys working on it. And you know, Harry, what's funny is, wasn't it Marty Smalls that called us at 20 of 11 on the day he was going to do a press conference at 11 o'clock to say that he's asking to remove two council members and that he had permission and support from the Senate President and the Speaker of the Assembly? When he misquoted them, because clearly Vinnie Cretto and Senator President Sweeney was always for lowering the cost of government, especially when it comes to the administration and council. He never said you could break the law, change the Faulkner Act. There's remedies under the Faulkner Act to lower the amount of council members.
Well, how about this, George? How about since Marty wanted to eliminate two council members, here the citizens have presented a petition to do just that? Oh, let me guess. Oh, that's right. He wanted to eliminate two at-large members of council. He didn't want to eliminate two ward council people, which one of them might be him.
Yeah, and that's what I was getting at, is that, you know, you're the one that came up with this great idea and you just couldn't get it done. Again, Marty Smalls couldn't get it done when he started, but George Tippett, Frank Gilliam, Mo Delgado and Jimmy Chang got it done.
Now, let me ask you this. Do you know the date? Now, the judge could always order questions on the ballot even after the date, but what's the date that something has to be ready to go so that it's there in time to be printed and put on the ballot? Do you know that last date?
Harry, I do not, but I know it's very close. I know the clerk is ready to send out, the Atlantic County clerk is ready to, you know, get the ballots.
Hey, by the way, another suggestion. Have your attorney fax a letter today to Atlantic County Clerk Ed McGeadigan, alerting him that you will be in court, that games are being played, that a petition, you know, that is absolutely conforming is being knocked out for political reasons, and that you're going into court to get resolution and for him to be expecting that. That, I think, would be good just communication.
Yeah, great minds think alike, Harry. That's something that we did, that we've been in constant contact with the clerk because we cannot trust any legal advice coming out of city hall. You know, they even went as far as to say, "Are you calling as Citizen George Tippett or are you calling as Councilman George Tippett?" Because you need to look at the criminal code, you guys, you know, indicating that we were possibly getting close to breaking the law by asking questions, like trying to put that fear tactic out there.
Unbelievable.
So when you call off, the first thing you got to say is, "This is Councilman Tippett or this is Citizen George Tippett?"
George, what a freak show you are a part of right now. But you know what? Like all change movements, you have to go through this kind of insanity before you get to the change that you're looking for. But I know this, anytime you frustrate the will of thousands of people who won a question on the ballot, it comes back to you in a very bad way. The next time you're on the ballot and you're one of those people that did every dirty trick in the book to frustrate the will of the people, I think this is absolutely everything that gives Atlantic City government the reputation that it has, George.
Yep. And Harry, I got to give you kudos on something. You know, you called Jesse Kurtz out a few weeks ago and I think you gave him a good smack upside his head to where he's attempting to do the right thing. Let's see if it lasts, but you know, he's communicating. He appears to realize, you know, some of the people he was siding with wasn't doing what was best for the people. So let's keep our fingers crossed that that smack upside his head you gave him resonates and he keeps going in the right direction.
Councilman, thank you for that and thank you for this great update. And just to everyone listening from all the other municipalities that are not Atlantic City, understand, these are the kinds of games that go on. And what's really disgusting about it, Atlantic City's fighting for its financial life right now. And for people to have the time to play dirty games, that should have just been, "It's on the ballot. See on November 8th. Let's see what the people want. Whatever they want, they're going to decide. Great, it's in a presidential election year, so it'll be the largest sampling and it will really get, you know, a definitive understanding from the people." But no, no, no. They try every dirty trick in the book. Wait till the 10th day to then reject and approve it, but then reject it. I'll tell you, George, this is the kind of stuff that gets me on the warpath.
Yeah, it does, Harry. It really does take your mind off of the things, the positive things, when you see this going on with the... You have to say it's borderline corruption. You know, people will do anything to be in charge. You know, they'll burn a house down and say, "I'm mayor of the ashes."
Oh, no, it is political corruption. I mean, every bit that you've described is political corruption. When a city official, especially an outgoing city official approves your petition and then you go about your work, you crush the number that you need, you turn it in only to find out, "Hey, we got to look at this. We'll get back to you." Wait 10 days? Oh, no, it's deficient. Look at this number. One number, one comma, one semicolon. It's dirty. It's filthy. And I'll tell you what, I'm ashamed of Rhonda because I thought better of her. I didn't think she was capable of playing the old games that used to get done. I have to go back to one person in my career in broadcasting who didn't play like that, and that was Ben Fitzgerald, who became a future city administrator, as you know. He didn't care. You know, he didn't care what pressure Jim Whalen or anybody else would bring to bear. If something was sufficient, he called it that way. I haven't seen that until Rhonda. I had not seen that integrity and now she's going out like this. And even if the judge flips it, it's still not going to be her doing unless she comes and cleans this up today, let's say. "Hey, guess what, guys? I looked at this. I don't need anybody's advice any further. I told you it was good. The people knew what they were signing. We're putting it on the ballot." First of all, would they be confused when it's on the ballot? You know, so the people, all you're doing is you're not deciding the question. You're just giving people the opportunity to vote on the question.
Absolutely, Harry. And you know what's even worse? I sat up there on city council and I said, "Listen, if you don't want to lower the number of people, let's take the savings that the city would have saved on getting rid of two council members and divide that by nine. And we'd still get the same savings and you've still got nine people representing. But oh, no, you're not going to see one of them dig in their pocket and give something back. It's robbing pillage as much as you can get from the city before the state takes over."
Well, I am very confident. I don't know who the judge is going to be because I don't know if the assignment judge is taking it or if it will be given to a different judge, but I'm very confident that an honest finder of fact will look at that and clearly see the city clerk approved it. The citizens knew exactly what they were signing when they signed the petition to put the question on the ballot. And it will be ordered on the ballot, George. I'm very confident of that.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident myself, Harry. But let me ask you one last question. How great would it be to show leadership when you know everybody in the city is going to have to take a haircut with their salaries? Wouldn't it be great as leaders for us to go first and give back 10%, 20%, whatever it must be, before the actual employees, so that we're willing to take tough cuts as well?
Yes. The answer is yes. It would be leadership. And the man who gets no credit for being a great leader, Donald Trump, when I became a senior hotel executive for him, everybody that reported to the president, we all took a pay cut because we were going to be asking employees to have to take a pay cut because of some, you know, the financial contraction that was going on in that era. And we led by example. That way employees could say, "Hey, look, they didn't cut us out. They all took cuts too." And it was not a perception thing. It was a really important, and not symbolism, it was an important, substantial thing to do. And yes, in your case, it would look like, hey, they're cutting this, they're cutting that, but they cut two of their own. And yeah, it would absolutely send the right message. And government, I think, would even be better. I think it would even be better with seven than it is with nine.
Absolutely. And Harry, I'm going to leave you with this, something we could talk about early next week. You know, I'm very happy that Revel's possibly going to open up. It looks good.
Oh, no, 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 George, you mean 10. Five minutes past the hour. We also had the Councilman George Tippett, Councilman-at-Large from the World Playground. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. This is Early in the Morning. And I want to say what I said right before the end of the hour, at the beginning of this hour. Chuck would usually be here. Chuck is understandably attending to all kinds of things with family. And just our deepest condolences go out to Chuck and to Larry and to Billy's mom and Vivian and the children, everybody in the Malamute family on this impossible loss because it's just not natural. 59 short years. It's just not, it's not right. And we try to, I mean, I told Chuck this morning, he and I were speaking, I said, "Just can't," you know, just like Chuck, I said, "I just can't, like I can't accept this. I'm not handling this well at all." And I don't handle these types of things well. But our deepest condolences. And Chuck will be back next week, but understandably, he is not here today. But he and I did speak before the program began. So Chuck, if you're out there listening, you know, thinking about you a lot, and take care. George Tippett is here. Does anybody know, somebody sent me a text message or an email. A friend wrote me that 10 is the loneliest number, but 1 is the loneliest number because I know music. What does this mean? Now, keep in mind, and this is not a shot at Glenn Strobe, but this guy is eccentric. Is that a kind way of putting it? So what is 10? Does Councilman Tippett know? Do you know what 10 is?
I have no idea in the world what 10 is. But I understand it's a private company that Mr. Strobe has made a deal with and contracted to run over 1,200 rooms in the hotel as well as the casino.
Okay. So the company is 10, so the property is going to be 10.
Yeah, so the property is going to be 10, so.
So I have to say, just as a former, and I was a rather successful hotelier, four diamond, four-star hotelier, that's a very bad name. That, you know, when you're trying to market a property, you want the property to have a name that has like panache, you know? I mean, Revel, for all the trouble that the property had, and that was really just a economies of scale thing where the buy-in price was in a different, you know, it started under one era and cruelly went into another. But Revel was kind of cool. You know, the different names you hear, Golden Nugget, awesome. Tropicana, awesome. Resorts, love it. You know, you could keep on going and keep on going. 10? I mean, hey, where are you staying at? I'm staying at 10. You know, in another state, I'm in Indiana. Where are you going for your honeymoon? We're going to 10. I think that is a really stupid idea. And even if you have a company that's running it, you don't have to name the property that. So anyhow, I reject 10 on its face. It doesn't sound good. It doesn't market well and I think it's really stupid. But anyhow, what's going on?
Okay, Harry, first, before I go any further, I want to send out my condolences to the Malamute family. He was someone I really enjoyed listening to on your show. I made a lot of financial decisions based upon listening to him, sometimes agreeing, sometimes not. But I listened to him just to get input and to help make decisions and I really miss hearing him on your radio show. And I just want to send my condolences to his family and their great loss.
Thank you, George. And by the way, so nobody gets confused, Billy was our mortgage expert. Chuck is our financial expert. They're brothers. And Billy passed. Chuck will be with us on Tuesday. But I know you know the difference and I just want to make sure our listeners don't get confused this morning either. So George, what is the story here now? What's going on?
This is my concern. I'm very happy for Mr. Strobe to be moving forward, to get this place open and hopefully bring great publicity towards the city as rebounding. But my concern is this pilot again, Harry. This casino pilot, right now Revel, $5 million, 5.6 million, $5.6 million in taxes that he pays, is now on the taxpayer's side because now the city's broken into two. The casinos and the third of the people that pay taxes, the remainder of the tax bill. Right now Revel is on our side of the ledger board. Now, as soon as he opens up his casino, he's going to go onto the pilot side, which potentially gives the casinos a tax break because now he's bringing more money into their side to be...
George, not potentially, literally. Literally it does because there is a number that's guaranteed and that number would be if there was less or if there was more. So they will now divide that number by adding whatever 10, I can't, it's going to take a long time to say this, to get used to this. Whatever 10 brings to the table, it's absolutely true what you just said. Now, keep in mind, if three casinos close, if North Jersey casinos pass in 48 days and in the next year to 18 months or less, three more casinos close, the existing casinos would be responsible to pay that fixed number even if there were three less payees. So it cuts both ways.
Well, don't forget that last bill that they signed at the very end in the Senate, it could also go down if their revenues don't stay the same. Remember, they put that little language in at the very last minute?
Well...
If they don't meet certain goals, their taxes could go down. But the point being, Harry, there's a lot of what ifs in the next years to come with the city. But today, our taxes as a resident and small businesses, our taxes are going to go up and the casinos today, when this pilot starts, will go down. They'll get a tax break. We're going to get a tax increase.
Yes, that is accurate.
How's that work? How much more can the average homeowner paying taxes, when you're paying $7 to $1,000 a month in taxes? I mean, Harry, when did you ever grow up in life and think, you know, "I'm going to pay my house off, but I'm still going to have a $1,000 a month bill for taxes"?
Yeah, no, it's getting really a lot to bear for many people and that's why a lot of people have to move. And some people have just been throwing keys and leaving. It's a very sad time, but this is exactly the scenario. That's how it goes. And remember, it wasn't all that long ago, the casinos paid 80% of all taxes. So this thing is flipping and the burden is absolutely now placed more on the citizen taxpayer. And there are a lot of people that literally can't hold up to that. They can't bear it.
And let me put, I was talking to the people that are connected friendly with the Icon group and, you know, just like this bill that Sweeney's putting out right now about you can't warehouse your casino license, that may push, that may push Icon to now challenge the legality of the pilot.
Uh-oh.
So watch what you wish for. You keep playing games, you know, they got, these guys got crazy money.
George, let me just throw something out that I don't expect that you would have any, like secret insight to, but because you have good hearing and you really pay attention to what's going on, good eyes, good ears, is there any chance that Unite Here Local 54 and Carl Icon could mend that situation and that the Trump Taj Mahal could stay open?
Well, Harry, as of August 29th, you know, I heard that they were going to be sitting down. I know, obviously, I guess it didn't go the way we were all hoping for Local 54. It didn't go the way that the employees needed it to go. But there was hope up to August 29th that Icon and Local 54 were going to get back to the table and try and hammer this out. out.
Well, they did meet one time since then, though, didn't they? Like, a week or so ago?
Well, I haven't heard nothing since then, but then again, I've been so tied up with this petition and all that, I didn't, you know, didn't go out of my way to even hear what was going on or not going on since the 29th of August.
I wanna follow up with one last question, but I'm not sure, you know, I can't just assume that you're just available to stay for one more segment. Are you? Or do you have to go?
Yeah, I could stay, no, I could stay for a little longer, yeah.
We'll stay, we'll keep you till the bottom of the hour, then we'll get you out. And to those that are on hold, don't go away, because we're gonna get to your calls in the order that you called in. After George has an opportunity, Councilman George Tippett, to share anything else that he wanted to bring, I wanna ask him to give us an update. When the city did not go along with the, the state bailout with quote-unquote "strings attached," and they did not make that move with the MUA, the state had already sent certain dollars, millions, to the city. We wanna ask the Councilman-at-Large his thoughts about where this stands. I think where they stand in my mind, Councilman, is that in the eyes of the state, the city is in default of the agreement, even though council didn't vote on it. I think the state is treating it like they had an agreement. Maybe they should or shouldn't have, but they did, and that the city is in default of that. And I would imagine that means that the state, whenever it decides, is gonna rain some hell, I think, and that perhaps this takeover may happen sooner rather than later. We'll get the Councilman's take on that when we come back in just a few minutes. It's Early in the Morning, we're the truth in broadcasting, the most relevant two-way talk radio broadcast in New Jersey history on WPG. Talk Radio 104.1 FM, 1450 AM, 104.9 FM on your HD2, and throughout the world at WPGtalkradio.com. This program is also a 10. With Atlantic City Councilman-at-Large George Tippett, we have Dr. Newkirk for the first half of the 9 o'clock hour, all about your pets, and then wide-open forum in the second half of our fourth and final quarter of what has just, I can't believe it, I'm looking at the clock, I can't believe how fast this program goes. It is the fastest four hours and six minutes in media. All right, Councilman, you were saying, and then I wanna ask you one last question. Go.
Um, where were we at? We were talking about the Revel pilot, and this bill that Sweeney just put up, like, I was talking to some people that are involved with the Icon organization, I seen them out, and, you know, there's a chance that Icon may challenge the pilot, the legality of the pilot. And so, so, you know, this pilot thing's not going away, it's not good for the city, it's not good for the county. And like, Harry, I saw a lot of people on your show, and I see a lot in the social media about the rest of the municipalities in this county having to bail Atlantic City out. And I wanna be clear, and I wanna be clear again, that you're not bailing, nobody in this county is bailing Atlantic City out. The county was getting a certain amount of money based upon $21.6 billion in ratables. We're now worth 6.7, so now you are getting taxes at the current county tax rate based upon $6.7 billion. You're not bailing us out.
Just the city is paying its existing fair share based on a town that is worth 2/3 plus less than it used to be.
Absolutely, Harry. And the municipality and the Board of Ed is facing the same problem that the county is, is that when you lose a ratable base of over, what, $12 million, what's it, 12, yeah, over $12 million, $13, $14 million, when you lose that kind of a ratable base, everybody's gotta cut, you know, you just don't have that much money coming in no more. Nobody is taking from any other municipality in the county to come in here and pay our bills. The county is not getting as much as it used to get because the ratable base has dropped again.
I mean, and by the way, going back to the future, or going back full circle, that's why you're looking to, and the people that have signed the petition, you're looking to make a more than 20% cut of city council, and you're being fought by certain unscrupulous actors there. All right, so let me, that's fair, and all that is, anybody that's being fair knows, you don't overpay. If you're not worth $21 billion, you don't pay like you're worth $21 billion, you pay like you're worth, you know, just under $7 billion. I think that's fair. And what I wanna spend the last seven or so minutes that we have, George, because I think this is a big deal, and I think it needs to be explained, and Thursday night, I was going to do it, but unfortunately, there's no hokey pokey here, the mayor has a function he has to be at. It did not have a set time, but it was on his schedule. We unfortunately will not be having the Ask the Mayor this Thursday, and it's really unfortunate. Hopefully, one day next week, the mayor can do it. I'm out Thursday, Friday, though, so unless we can do it the first three days of the week, it's not gonna happen until the October program. But I still wanna bring up this issue with you. The state of New Jersey believed it had a deal. The mayor, as recently as our last Ask the Mayor program, believed he not only had the authority to do what he did, but thought he had an ace in the hole because of a March, you know, 2016 vote by city council that allowed him to have a certain level of negotiating authority. I do believe council thought he went too far, and then it was rescinded, so he doesn't have it at all, and then the other matter didn't pass. But tell me if this is accurate, the state believed it had struck a deal, and that the approval of the legislative branch was just a very routine, you know, perfunctory thing that would just happen through a normal course of, you know, business. But then city council laid a smackdown on it, didn't vote for it, and rescinded the March authority, if indeed there was even that level of authority given in March. All question was removed by taking that away. Does that leave the city, in your estimation, if not legally, at some level, sort of in default with that deal, since the state did send over a certain amount of millions of dollars in good faith that the 72-plus-million-dollar state bailout, if you will, and I know you don't like that term, for the amount of money that Atlantic City has sent to the state for the last 40 years, but I have to call it something, so we can talk about it, you can change the words if you want. But the state funding at 72-plus million with strings attached, when the city council didn't approve the MUA, did that put this matter into sort of an informal default status, in your opinion?
Harry, you have to go back to the March Resolution, 195 and 198, whatever that was. You cannot violate the Faulkner Act, whether council votes to violate the Faulkner Act or not. The Faulkner Act clearly says that the mayor negotiate, council has to approve the final product. Back then, when we approved that, it was, and it was said, and I think if you look at the tape of the council meeting, you will give you the right to go negotiate terms and conditions of a loan, but then you bring it back to council, your work product, and then it gets voted on. So Don's hanging on that, but upon arrival, it's illegal, because you cannot violate the Faulkner Act, even if you're local municipal.
Well, George, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Gilliam's resolution, he, you guys voted to rescind that anyhow, didn't you?
Yes, we voted to rescind that, but I'm saying upon arrival of the loan, that was illegal from the get-go. So now you get into the loan itself. Four, five council members showed up when they called all the council members about a half hour to 45 minutes before a meeting, with violating the Sunshine Act, not giving the public notice, and then we find out that the meeting is illegal, so we definitely weren't gonna come and participate in an illegal action, Jimmy Chang, Frank Gilliam, Mel Delgado, and myself. So it was a four, four vote, yes, one abstention. But understand, Sporty Randolph should not have voted on that, because he's part of the MUA, the water company. He should have abstained, because he abstained on the next vote at the last council meeting, when it involved the bills and everything, dealing with the water company and the loan.
George, you just educated me on something that either I never knew, or that I forgot I knew. I thought he was the abstention of that four-to-one. Who was the abstention? Jesse?
Jesse Kurtz was.
Oh, well, guess what? I mean, Sporty should not have voted.
Absolutely. So there may be issues with that. But right now, you understand, last year, when Frank Gilliam was council president and showed great leadership, Tim Cunningham came to Atlantic City, was up in the mayor's office in the conference room with all the administration, Councilman Gilliam, and when they threw out that trial balloon of a draft copy of the same thing with the terms and conditions for state aid and everything, and they wanted the MUA and the water company and the Bader Field again, Frank told them to go pound sand. Now, that's leadership. You look the guy in the face from the DCA, and you tell them to go pound sand, then no way are you gonna give up this stuff. And then what did Tim Cunningham say in the newspaper at that time? "Oh, it was a mistake, it wasn't supposed to have been put out, we don't know how they got that, and it shouldn't have been put out." Do you remember that, Harry?
I absolutely remember it, and that shows you, strength, leadership through strength, they backed down, they actually backed down. They meant it to be in there, they didn't expect that somebody would call it out.
So now you get Frank's, you know, you get Jesse that made the mistake of his life, and supports the wrong person to be leading council, and you, now the state gets their hands on a weakling like Don Guardin, that just likes to go out and cut ribbons and doesn't wanna do the dirty work, and it's clear now, that's all he does is go and cut ribbons, and doesn't do the hard work, and then you have Councilman Smalls, and they slide it right back in, and Alibaba and the Four Thieves go for it. And now our assets, our greatest assets that we have are in jeopardy now. So the only thing we have right now, and only hope, is that Seth Grossman wins in court, and undoes it, undoes what those guys had signed into office, I mean, signed into law.
Well, I thought you rescind, I thought, so I thought you rescinded it all, though, so it's still.
Harry, me and you could, me and you could rescind our home mortgages and all, but it doesn't mean it's rescinded, as far as the law goes, you know? So as far as we're concerned.
Here was the thing I didn't understand, it looks to me like the state's taking the city over anyhow, and if the state takes over the city, then they can go grab the Bader Field and sell it or lease it, they can grab the MUA, lease it or sell, they can, they'll be able to do all that anyhow, right?
Well, there are avenues that the city could take, and if you read that loan agreement, it, you know, they say you can't file bankruptcy, but why is it in every loan agreement, you promise not to file bankruptcy? Something be in there if you can't do it, right? And they're telling you, you can't file any type of motion against the state, you can't file any civil rights actions against the state. All this stuff is in their loan agreements. Well, if they were in the right, would that stuff be in your loan documents?
That's a good point, you wouldn't be redundant if you didn't think it had to be in there in the first place.
The state is having the field day with the idiots we got running this city right now.
Is it?
They're having a field day, they're running all over the mayor and the council president. He wants to be mayor so bad that he'll sit there and roll the ashes, and be happy to say he's mayor.
So he's working in concert with the present mayor in hopes that he can be the immediate future mayor.
We can't figure this one out. We can't, you know.
Because usually, if you wanna be the next one, you disagree with everything the one is doing. So I don't, you know, I don't know what to make of this.
You're gonna say your debates, I agreed with the mayor, Guardin, on absolutely everything, but I think you should take him out and vote for me.
Yeah, it doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Electrifying appearance, Councilman, electrifying.
And this administration is giving you everything. Don't forget, Don Guardin made deals with the Senate President and Chris Christie, there's no doubt about it. He made deals, and he reneged. When Art's Liston left, he reneged on all the deals that he made. Council didn't know he made these deals, but he was going along with this.
Well, look, there was a, hey, look, there was a rat in the woodpile when I went public and exposed that whole issue with the firefighter grant. There was somebody, there was a bad actor trying not to do the paperwork in time. Why anybody would ever wanna lose all those firemen, I mean, it's disgusting, but we blew the whistle, and we didn't get any credit for that one, but we saved the day on that one, because we stayed on top of that. There was a bad actor in that as well. And, George, I appreciate the appearance today, gotta get a break in real soon. Is there anything you wanna say in closing?
Yeah, and just don't forget, Harry, what you said about the firemen, don't forget, Frank and I fought to get that, keep that grant and everything, and the mayor was totally against it. And, and all of a sudden, the firemen loved this guy to death. And, you know, this is the guy that tried to lay 40 years off with free federal money, and now you're supporting him. Shame on you. You're, you're leading yourself to a guillotine to be behind this guy. You should be putting your foot up his rear end for attempting to get rid of that many firemen. Now he loves the firemen that Art's Liston's going, something about uniforms.
Councilman?
He wants to be, wants to be with them, and he wants to be their best friends now. Well, you already damaged them, you damaged them at the state level, you said they were unreasonable, that you can't deal with them, you can't negotiate with them, well, you've already stained their reputation, and now, it's funny, they wanted to regionalize the police department, now they're hell-bent on getting rid of the fire department, of which, what, $8 million a year is paid through a federal grant? Makes no sense to me, we're living in crazy times.
Bizarro world. Councilman, to be continued.
Take care, have a good day, Harry.
You too.